Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee Hearing for October 25th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature regarding virtual hearings. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through March 2023. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page at the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The Chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions may be repeated throughout the hearing. Today's Board consists of a full Board, but we're not sure if everyone is here yet, so as a result, if any applicant would like to wait until a seven-member Board is seated, you can seek an administrative deferral. But let me take a roll call to determine how many remain today. So, Mr. Fortune?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning. Mr. Ogierro, I believe he said he might be late. Ms. Dawn?
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Robinson?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Piñado?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
And Ms. Loeb?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so everybody's here, Mr. Ogierro will be late, so we're all set. Mr. Hampton, are you there also for the VPDA?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Fortune, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of September 13th of 2022. Need a motion?
No motion.
Mr. Fortune, is there a second?
Second, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ogierro, oh, Mr. he's late. Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
I didn't hear you, but I'm in favor, so...
Yes, sorry. I'm here.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Motion passes.
Thank you. Calling the first extension, calling DOA 799-14730, Thorn Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Chair, Attorney Mick Cizula, McDermott, Colty Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, here on behalf of 30 Thorn LLC.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. In regards to 30 Thorn Street, the Board originally granted this relief on November 6th of 2018, and has since granted two extensions of that relief. However, both extensions were unnecessary because COVID tolling applied for this relief. With tolling, this relief did not expire until February 23rd of 2022. However, the Board's most recent extension until November 6th of 2022 covered the full tolling period. I recommended the Board confirm this for the record. The applicant now requests an additional extension until November 6th of 2023. I recommend that the Board grant this extension if appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that would be the only applicant's second necessary extension. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to extend the extension until November 6th of 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, the motion passes.
Thank you. Calling the next extension, calling DOA 103-5883-178-Brighton Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Rebecca Glipman-Simon from Fitch Bar Partners. The business address is 84 State Street in Boston.
Thank you, good morning, Counselor. In regards to 178 Brighton Avenue, the Board originally granted this relief on November 6th of 2020, so COVID tolling does not apply to this relief. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we do a one-year extension from today's date of October 25th to 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 103-5609-820-WILLIAM T. MORRISsey BOLIVARD. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Philip Strazulla, S-T-R-A-Z-Z-U-L-L-A, 820-MORRISSE-BOLIVARD, George Hudson.
Thank you, sir. In regards to 820 WILLIAM T. MORRISSE BOLIVARD, the Board originally granted this relief on November 13th of 2020, so COVID tolling does not apply to this relief. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Chair, I will again make a motion to approve a one-year extension from today's date of October 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ogierro, oh, he's still not here, sorry, Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 107-2124-295-KITTERICH STREET. Name and address for the record, please. Is there a Mr. Timko on? Or someone for...
Hello?
Me?
Yes. This is Diana Porter, Ryan Furman. We filed to be able to pass the ownership of this permit to my name for my company.
Are you talking about Kitterich Street, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, hold on two seconds. In regards to 295 Kitterich Street, the Board originally granted this relief on November 13th of 2020, so COVID tolling does not apply to this relief. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension, and I recommend that the Board grant that extension under the appropriate, under the circumstances. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for a one-year extension from today's date of October 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Calling the next, sorry, calling the next case, calling DOA 810-882-QUARTY-HODDING-ROAD. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Sir Chair and Members of the Board, Alexander Burke of 570 Hyde Park Ave., owner and applicant.
Thank you, sir. Regarding Quartey Hodding Road, the Board originally granted this relief on November 30th of 2018, and has since granted two extensions of that relief. However, both extensions were unnecessary because COVID tolling applied to this relief. With tolling, this relief did not expire until March 7th of 2022. However, the Board's most recent extension until November 30th of 2022 covers the full tolling period. I recommend that the Board confirm the record. The applicant now requests an additional extension of November 30th of 2023. I recommend that the Board grant this extension if it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that would be the only applicant's second necessary extension. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to extend till November 30th of 2023.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case for extension, calling DOA 106-8564-28-MONUMENT STREET. Name and address for the record, please. Is anybody on for Monument Street?
There is a raised hand here, Gerald, is that you?
Yes, hello. This is Gerald Athler of 28 Monument Street, owner and applicant.
Thank you, sir. Regarding 28 Monument Street, the Board originally granted this relief on December 11th of 2020, so COVID tolling does not apply to this relief. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for a one-year extension from today's date of October 25th.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, calling DOA 658-980-10-MCBRIDE STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, 130 BEACH ROAD, ORLEANS, MASS.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Regarding 10 McBride Street, the Board originally granted this relief on November 3rd of 2017. The Board has since granted three extensions of this relief. However, the second extension was unnecessary. With COVID tolling, the first extension remained valid until February 8th of 2022. However, the Board's most recent extension until November 3rd of 2022 covered the full tolling period. I recommend that the Board confirm this for the record. The applicant now requests additional extension until November 3rd of 2023. I recommend that the Board grant this extension if it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that would be the only applicant's third necessary extension rather than four. Mr. Moran, are we going to be able to get this project done, or are we still on a holding period? I know the Board looks at these things, the extensions a little bit longer than normal.
The current status is that all the necessary construction drawings, water and sewer approvals, utility approvals, PIC approvals are on the plant examiner's desk. He requires that there is slight variations in the plan that Board final arbiter besought to stamp the construction drawings. That matter is on today's agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moran.
If the Board approves, the permit will issue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moran. I'll make a motion to the extension for one year to November 3rd of 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 106-6449-6GLOVER-COURT. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, with Adams of Moran's Heat, business address of 168 8th STREET, South Boston.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 6 Glover STREET, the Board originally granted this relief on November 6th of 2020, so COVID tolling does not apply to this relief. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension. I recommend that the Board grant that extension if it's appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion for a one-year extension from today's date of October 25th.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
I'm in favor, the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. This is the last extension, case DOA 932-319-16-GLENDALE STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Vernon Woodworth, 9 Elizabeth STREET in Matapan.
Thank you, sir. Regarding 16 Glenn Dale STREET, the Board originally granted this relief on October 11th of 2019, so COVID tolling does not apply, does apply, I'm sorry, does apply. With tolling, this relief remains valid until January 16th of 2023. The applicant is now seeking their first one-year extension. I recommend that the Board grant the extension until January 16th of 2024 if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Woodward, Woodworth, you don't expire until January 16th of 2023?
Yes, however, the plant examiner apparently didn't have that information and informed us that we needed an extension.
Well, do you think you need an extension beyond January?
No, we should have the permit well before then.
Mr. Chair, we could probably do a six-month instead of one-year.
That sounds fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we do a six-month extension for January 16th of 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes, so that would be July 16th of 2023, just for the record. Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the Board Final Arbiter, calling the first case, calling BZC 30745-583-Ashmont STREET. There is a companion case, BZC 30746-585-Ashmont STREET. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Stefanoff on? Is anybody on for Ashmont, 583 or 585 Ashmont?
Yeah, is that project? ONS is on, can you let us know if the applicant's on?
We'll come back, we'll come back to that, Madam Vessel. Regarding next case, case DOA 658-980-10-MCBRIDE STREET. Final Board Arbiter, name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, 130 BEACH ROAD, ORLEANS, MASS.
Mr. Moran, you want to tell us why you're seeking final arbiter?
The construction drawings vary from the zoning drawings. I suggest they're slight variations. The size of the three units is slightly reduced by the architect's, the current architect's measurement. Briefly stated, the original architect did not complete the construction drawings, he retired and died. This is the third architect who was able to provide the construction drawings remaining within the building footprint. He reduced the elevation of the building by 31 inches in order to conform to ADA access to the building, and reduced the number of entryways from two to one to provide greater maneuverability within the structure, which then caused a variation in the window alignments. The plant examiner wanted the Board to stamp these construction drawings, and if the Board so stamped the construction drawings, he would issue the permit. Due to concerns about administrative approval, I had sought the one-year extension, and hopefully the Board will approve these changes, and that the permit would issue.
Okay, got it. So, a couple of questions. The footprint of the building is unchanged, correct?
Correct.
And the size of the units you said was changed, is that based on the change in the entryways?
No, the measurement of the architect, there's slight reductions in the three units.
Oh, it's simply the accuracy of the measurements that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so the only changes are reduced elevation by 31 inches and going from two entryways to one, that's...
Correct, and causing a variation in the window alignments.
Okay, all right. Mr. Robinson, have you had a chance to review these updated drawings?
I have, and there's no questions for me. I think it's very straightforward. I appreciate the process that the applicant has had to gone through, but I think this is an easy one for us to approve.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, good luck, Mr. Moran.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, this is Tom. I just wanted to bring to your attention, I received an email from the city's IT department saying we have some network connectivity issues, so if there are some issues with people, I just encourage them to hop off, to hop back on if they run into any technical issues, so hopefully they'll be able to resolve in the next couple of hours.
Okay, we have some connectivity issues, just repeating what Mr. Broome said, if you're having problems connecting, jump off and then jump on, and hopefully that will correct it. It's, we have quite an abstract drawing on our screen there. It's just modern art, I guess. All right.
I'm going to go right to the groundwater conservation then, if maybe the Board Final Arbiter...
Okay, is Mr. Stefanoff, is Mr. Stefanoff still out there?
Yeah, I'll do the groundwater, and then I'll come back to the Board.
All right, fine, that was good.
Calling the first case, G Card, case DOA 136-7326-32-FIET STREET. This is a substantial rehabilitate the single-family dwelling, construct an addition of the rear, and install a groundwater recharge system. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, the G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Dan Eldridge with Acme Neily Architects. Business address is 580 Harrison Ave. in Boston.
Is Mr. Semenelli on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Okay.
We also have Mr. Chair as well, Secretary.
Okay, can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case, G Card, calling DOA 139-1361-12-MABRO STREET. This is removing and replacing asphalt parking space, but all new herringbone pattern heated bricks with three new parking spaces. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, this is G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Jesse Aguilar with High Point Engineering. Business address is 980 Washington Street in Dillon, Massachusetts.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
And we have them as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, also, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Chair, before I call in the 9:30, I don't think Mr. Stefanoff is in on the call, but I'll make a motion to defer until the November 15th meeting at 9:30.
Okay, makes sense.
I'll second that, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñado?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I know we have six members, correct?
We have six members, but we are due to have, I haven't heard from Mr. Ogierro, but he said he...
Guys, I'm here, I'm trying to get my computer with my camera to work, but I'm here on a little iPad mini, so...
All right, well, we've got your audio, Mr. Ogierro, so that counts, that's good enough, nice to see you, or not see you, nice to hear you.
Thanks.
All right, so we have a seven-member Board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you. So I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you are going to defer or withdraw your 9:30 project, give me the address first, please. Okay. Calling the first case, calling DOA 136-7321-438-Washington STREET. This is a build an addition onto an existing dental office on the first floor, relocate a wheelchair ramp. The violation is Article 51, Section 17, the rear yard is insufficient. In Article 51, Section 17, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Attorney John Pulgeni, on behalf of the applicant, Dr. Maria Vasilakis. So, 438 Washington STREET in Brighton, the zoning here is neighborhood shopping five. The lot size is 3,641 square feet. The proposal is to add a single-story rear addition of approximately 250 square feet to this existing dental practice, with a relocation of a handicap ramp inside the garage bay. The dimensions of the addition is approximately seven by 34 feet. With me is Dr. Vasilakis, who is the owner of this dental practice. Dr. Vasilakis has been practicing her dental practice from this location for nine years. Prior to that, this location has been a neighborhood dental practice for over 50 years. This added space will allow the office to have an additional interior office for the busy neighborhood dental practice. We have two violations that Mr. Fortune just read. We have a rear yard, a lot is 20 feet. We have an existing violation of 11 feet that was just triggered by the addition in the back. FAR .5 is allowed, current FAR is 1.06, and this small increase will only raise that to 1.12. Went through a great community process, no objections. We have the support of the Brighton also Improvement Association, and we have also submitted nine letters of support. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, Mr. Pulgeni, thank you. So, this is what, a three-story building, and the dental office is on the first floor?
That is correct.
Residential above, what's...
Yes, it's residential above.
Okay. And the rear yard violation, what is it and what's required?
So, under the code, 20 feet is allowed. We're at 11 feet. If you look at the plans, you can see that we have a structure, a fixed garage that is there now, so the addition up the back just triggered the violation because we're doing work in the previous violated zone.
So, the rear yard insufficiency is an existing condition?
Yes, because if you look at the plan that we have up right here, you'll see that the, to the rear of the building, the addition's going to go to the right of the garage, what you're looking at there, so annexed to the main structure, that the garage is affixed to the main structure.
Got it, okay. All right, seems pretty straightforward. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Drawings are good, just one question, just to make sure we understand, so the garage doesn't look like an actual two-car garage anyway, so I assume there's no real change in the parking. There's one car shown, and it seems like it only can handle one car anyway, so the new ramp doesn't seem to be taking away from anything, it seems, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Robinson.
No more questions for me, thanks.
All right, thanks. Mr. Pulgeni, I assume this is just, the goal here is just to expand the practice and to be able to take in more patients, is that...
Exactly, Mr. Ehrlich, it's just literally adding one more dental office to the interior of the building.
Okay, and does that mean hiring additional staff as well?
Yes, we would hopefully, you know, a hygienist or something like that, but also a dentist to work in that area. It's a growing, it's a neighborhood practice, so this is not obviously a big place, it's very much in a college area, and it has been in, uses the dental practice for, you know, over 60 years.
Oh, okay. All right, is there anyone here to testify, either in favor or in opposition?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Frank Mendoza, Alston-Brighton Liaison here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. As always, I'm referring to the judgment of the Board, but in this case, we're unaware of any opposition from the community at this time. We've only heard things of support from the community, including the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, as well as from the Butters meeting. Again, deferring to the judgment of the Board, thank you.
The Chair's secretary here, we have nine letters of support and two letters of opposition, but the opposition didn't leave a comment.
Good morning, this is Mara McCray from Council Brighton's office. The Council would like to go on record according to this project, thank you.
Thank you.
Annabella, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Council on Record and Support.
Just calling between hearings, I'll call you out by 10:30, Eric.
I'm sorry, Annabella, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Members of the Board, and Alston Improvement Association would like to go on record in support, thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
Oh, is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. I think with BPDA design review, just to ensure the ramp and the addition fit in there. I'll say.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Me too.
Thank you, everybody. Again, Mr. Ruggiero.
Oh, I'm back. That's right. Mr. Ruggiero, you're in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 134406966 Waverly Street. There's a companion case, BOA 13440676264 Waverly Street. This is 66 Waverly. On parcel 637, an existing detached two-family dwelling, direct a new detached three-story two-family dwelling with balconies and roof access and engraft parking. This will be one of two dwellings located on the same lot. The violation is Article 51, Section 9. The lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 57, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for 6264 Waverly. Existing two-family dwelling located at 6264 to share a lot with proposed two-family dwelling located at 66 Waverly and 4 Abbey Road. This will be one of two dwellings located on the same lot. The violation is Article 51, Section 57, two or more dwellings located on the same lot. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Fortune. Tim Johnson, architect, 599 East Broadway, South Boston. I'll wait for the drawings to come up.
Okay, all right. This existing 7,500-square-foot corner lot is in the 3F 4,000 zoning subdistrict.
The lot is 500 feet shy of a double lot. The lot contains an existing two-family with engraft parking and existing trees to remain. We're proposing a second two-family with engraft parking and additional trees. We are utilizing the existing curb cut along Abbey Road, access to required seven parking spaces, but we're also reconfiguring the parking area to provide additional planting and trees and the required open space for four units. The new two-family contains duplex units, two bedroom each, 1,500 square foot average. Finally, the board, the drawings before the board have been revised to reflect the neighborhood and civic association's concerns and comments, resulting in a decrease of zoning violations. I'll take any questions from the board.
Okay, do the drawings show, are there any further details, elevations, renderings? Okay, good.
So this.
Yeah, just walk us through the drawings.
Yes. This is the architectural site plan. You see the proposed footprint in the shaded area on the corner of Abbey and Waverly. The entrances for each unit, one off Abbey, one off Waverly. The entrance to the parking area is off Abbey, as I explained earlier. You can see the existing trees, which are very nice and healthy, and we're adding some additional, Boston Parks approved trees. Next slide, please. This is a view of the corner of Abbey and Waverly, showing the existing two-family in the rear and the proposed two-family in the front of the image. Next slide, please. This is a view from Abbey toward Waverly, showing the rear of the proposed two-family. We have balconies, outside space for each unit. The roof will have access to proposed solar panels. And I can go through the green aspects of the project if you'd like. Next slide, please. Lower level, showing unfinished space. Next slide, please. This is the ground floor. We pulled the building back two feet from the corner. Initially, we were cited for traffic visibility across corner. We pulled the building back. Per neighborhood comments, we also worked on the aesthetics of the project and the depth of the balconies. This shows the proposed two-family with the entrances off each road. Next slide, please. Second floor, the master suite with an office area, as offices are very coveted in these days. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, that was the two bed, that was one bedroom. The master suite's on the top floor with the balcony. My apologies. The balcony depth was increased per the Butters comments.
What is the depth on the balconies?
Five feet, clear.
Okay.
They were four feet. Next slide, please. We show our roof access where our heat pumps will be and future solar panels. We'll wire to, provide wiring to the roof for the panels. Building section, showing our height, 33 feet to the roof plate. The maximum height here is 33 feet. Next, 35 feet. Next slide, please. Another section. Next slide, please. This is the elevation off Abbey Road, showing the Abbey Road entrance with the balcony on the top floor for the master bedroom. Next slide, please. This is the elevation off Waverly. Next slide, please. Elevation, south elevation, and then finally, next slide, please. The rear elevation.
Okay. So the violations, first of all, what are the unit sizes?
These are two-bedroom units with an average unit size of 1,500 square foot, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the violations have to do with lot area and two or more dwellings on the same lot?
Yes, the lot area required per additional unit is 2,000. We're at 1,875, and the other is front yard. We didn't provide a modal yard plan, so we're cited for front yard. We have a front yard of 14 feet along Waverly and five feet along Abbey.
Okay, and my final question has to do with the parking area. Is there, you talked about leaving existing trees and adding additional ones. Is there fencing via abutting property, or how is it, how is it separated from the neighboring property?
Yes, if we could scroll up to the site plan. There's existing fencing. There is a chain link fence between the Abbey, between the Waverly Butter property, and then a stockade fence between the property and the Abbey Street.
Okay, so they're existing.
There's existing fencing, right there.
All right, and the basement is just being used for utilities and storage?
Utilities, storage, correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are good. No, actually, no questions. Very straightforward. I think it fits in the context as well, so you sort of addressed most of my other questions. I do think we need to put a proviso on if we approve for site plan review, and just make sure the parking is buffered and screened properly and some other things. But no questions on the proposal. I guess, actually, one question. So you do have full stairs to the roof with hatches, which is, kind of alludes to roof decks. Were they there before and then removed? Is that what happened, or?
No, these would be bulkheads with roof doors.
Okay, so just for mechanical access?
That's correct. The existing two-family are rental units, and be rental units, so my client, we are not, no, just access to the future solar panels, which is part of the green aspects of the project.
Great. No further questions, thank you.
Any questions on the board? Is anyone here to testify with respect to the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here again, Austin Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, deferring to the judgment of the board, but here to report that as far as community engagement process went, the applicant received a letter of support from the Austin Civic Association, which the board should have on file, as well as approval from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, with the proviso that the applicant get BPDA design review. As always, deferring to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, this is Maury McCray from Council of Brighton's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project with the proviso that the applicant undergoes our BPDA design review. Thank you.
Thanks.
Annabella?
Here's a member of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support with BPDA design review, with some attention to the house. Right now, it's really just a square. It is on a corner, so we'd like it to have a little bit more architectural and not just being, you know, a box for your family, and attention to landscaping on the corner, especially on the Abbey Road side, to make sure that there is some greenery there, not just a, like a little space between the house and the sidewalk. Thank you.
Tony?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tony Disadoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We have a slight majority of members that went on record to approve this project, citing the need for housing in the community. Those who did oppose the project were concerned about density, the fact that this is, will be investor-owned, and the concerns about the precedent setting of putting more than one detached dwelling on the same lot. But as I said, a slight majority of members did vote to approve this project.
Thank you. Tim, can you give me your name and address for the record, please?
I can. My name's Tim McHugh. I own 68 Waverly Street, which abuts the project.
And are you in favor or opposed?
I just got this notification on Saturday. I haven't had even a chance to look at the plans and how this situates my property. I would like more time, look at it, to kind of review it, and come up with a decision.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, just, these, both buildings will be rentals, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there, is there any, was there any discussion? I know in the neighborhood, in particular, the issue of student housing versus sort of more long-term family housing. Any discussion about that?
Is my friend online, Tom McDonough? No, there was no, Mr. Chairman, there was no discussion on whether student housing was liked or disliked in the neighborhood. I don't know the existing rental units, if they're students or not, but they are rentals, and my client has taken care of this property over the years, shoveling the sidewalk, et cetera, taking good care of the property. That's what I do know.
Okay. All right, well, I gather it would have come up at either the community organization, so. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review for site plan and parking and buffering, and also the landscape plan as it relates to the connection to the adjacent power stall and property and the corner.
Thank you. Joe.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
All right, two of them in favor. And can, Mr. Johnson, can someone reach out to that Butter who is just learning about this and just make that connection, please?
Yes, of course. We, you, yes, you have my word. We will reach out to that Butter and review the plans with him, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1381690290 Cornell Street. This is a dormer and added to the third-floor walk-up bedroom. Reconfigure the bathroom and closet on the third floor. The violation is Article 67, Section 9. Side yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Bond Worthington, 110A Inman Street, Cambridge, I'm the architect for the project. I believe Andy, the client is also on here as well, Andy Rosen.
Andy Rosen, for the record, 290 Cornell Street, Roseland Hill. Thanks for having us today.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us about the project?
Okay, I'll walk you through the plans. The project is a, two dormers on the north and south of that existing house on the third floor to give more living space to the project. Results in about 306 more square feet to the project. We're not changing the footprint, and otherwise, we're being cited for some pre-existing non-conformities and in terms of front yard, rear yard, side yard, and floor area.
Okay, so all the citations, as you said, are pre-existing conditions, right?
That's correct.
Rear, front, side. What about the height? Are you pushing the roof up, or is it?
We are reframing the roof to give code head height. The average, that will bring the peak of the roof to 34.3, the average grade in the area, and from this average grade of the property line at Cornell Street to the mean of the highest ridge is 33 and a half feet, or 33.6 feet.
And what was it before? How far, how much higher are you pushing it?
It was 33.6 to the, to the, I'm sorry, it was originally from the survey, to the, average grade to the peak was 33.3, and now, so it's pushing it a foot higher.
Okay. All right, and it's additional 300 square feet, you said?
Yeah, 306.
Okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think this is really straightforward. It fits within the context. There's other dormers on the other houses. It's still below the zoning height. Really see no issue with this.
And this is owner occupied?
That's correct.
Okay, probably could have come before the subcommittee, but.
Yeah, probably could have, yeah. No questions for me.
All right, any questions on the board? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Good morning, chair, members of the board. My name is Udo Notti with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted a meeting for this project on September 6th, and while Noah was in attendance at the meeting, I did receive proof of firing. My office just received seven letters of support for the project as well, and we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
The chair have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Fortune, you have those letters?
I do not.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With no design review necessary?
I don't think so. This is fairly straightforward.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second?
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
All right, two of them in favor, the motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 135305455 Boyles Street. This is a new second and third-floor addition, a logic garage, in-law suite above, and a basement, plain space below, mudroom connector, first and second floor. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Hosford, Helios Design Group, 116 St. Petal Street, Boston.
Good morning. Can you please, please walk us through what you're proposing?
So the current house is a two-story with a single-story L in the back with a detached two-car garage. We are proposing to add a story on the two-story section, a story over the second story, one single-story section, and make a connector to make an attached two-car garage with an in-law suite above.
How many additional square feet are you proposing?
I believe it's about 20, 200 square feet.
Okay, but the number of units will stay the same?
It's still a single-family house. The owners are originally from California. The in-law suite is to allow for extended stay by family, so it's not for rental, it's not detached, it's not, you know, it's connected.
I'm a little confused by what you said. The owners are from California? The owners are from California, so who lives there?
They live in, they live in the house here. They're originally from California. They're permanent residents of Jamaica Plain.
Oh.
They want to create this in-law suite for family who live in California to come to Boston and stay for extended periods of time.
Got it. So we're not talking about a potential Airbnb or anything?
Yeah, absolutely not.
Okay, yeah, just, you want to keep scrolling through the slides, please, Madam Ambassador? Okay. So it's an additional two thousand square feet. What's the existing? It's a pretty big, big unit, big home.
Yeah, twenty-one, so it's existing sixteen fifty-four, proposed is thirty-seven forty-seven.
Okay. All right, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The drawings are good, no question. I mean, I think the, it is enlarging the house quite a bit, but I think it fits within the context still in terms of the sizes of the houses, and, you know, the side yard issue is existing on sort of the right-hand side and on the left-hand side where the garage is going, and the new resident above is on a small, sort of looks like a, really an access alleyway of some sort called Dresden Street. So I actually think this is an okay addition and expansion of the existing house, so really no questions about it in terms of the proposal from me.
Okay, thank you. Can we scroll back up to one of the elevations? What is the exterior finish on the mudroom connectors?
We're imagining glass and copper.
Huh, yeah, I'm looking at that, that's interesting.
Yep.
What do you think of that, Mr. Robinson?
I think it's beautiful. Yeah, they're from California, right? Something a little different, but I think, you know, it'll be interesting to see. I think the B P D A will, we'll have a design review on this, but I think, I think a contemporary connection can be interesting between the two traditional.
No, no, it's a little unusual, it's nice. All right, any questions on the board? Okay, is anyone here to testify for or against the project?
Mr. Chair, I would just know Dresden Street is not an alley, it's a small street in Jamaica Plain.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Small street, I'll read.
You don't want it to mean Dresden.
What houses on it?
No, no, I understand. I just meant, there's no parking on it, it's an access, seems like a more of an access street.
I mean, the, all the houses on Dresden Street are well within, you know, they all, none of them conforming with front yard setback, they're all.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, calling.
Go ahead.
Calling with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the Board. Our office held an abutters meeting on August tenth, where abutters in attendance expressed non-opposition to the proposal. The Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council wrote a letter recommending approval for the proposal. At this time, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Anybody else?
We do have a few raised hands here. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at Lash, Michael Flaherty. Knowing no known opposition, although the J P M C being in support, council, thank you.
And then Layton, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? All right, Layton, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Good morning, my name is Layton Johnson. I'm calling in support of what you and I gave me a role, and I'm just calling to support that the building of the, the refurbishing of the barn there, it doesn't seem to mean that changes the footprint of what's going to happen there. They're just trying to expand this space for additional housing for family members. They're not looking to rent the space, and they're not even looking to expand the space beyond the current capacity. So I think there's a reasonable request that should be affirmed by the, by the tenants there.
Thank you.
Who owns that space.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with B P D A Design Review, B P D A Design Review.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
All right, two of them in support, motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling V O A one three four four two eight three one Waltney Road. This is addition of living space and change of occupancy from a single family to a two-family. Violation is Article sixty-nine, section thirty point one, the building alignment conformity. Article sixty-nine, section eight, building a two-family in a one F nine thousand is forbidden. Article sixty-nine, section nine, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article sixty-nine, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-nine, section nine, usable spaces insufficient. And Article sixty-nine, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Eileen Rosa from Rosa Design and Construction. I am representing the owner, Mrs. Vanessa Prince, who is the owner of this property. She has lived with this property since nineteen sixty-six for about fifty-six years and owned this property since nineteen eighty-seven. That's about thirty-five years. The existing, well, her intention here is to provide additional living space to one of her family members that are living with her in this moment, and basically, the existing lot size is four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two square feet, and it contains a existing two bathrooms, two bathrooms, single-family home of about one thousand three hundred forty-seven square feet. The intention is to make a thirteen feet by thirty-three feet addition with a total of one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine square feet, three bedrooms, and two point five bathrooms, to convert this property into a two-family dwelling. The floor-toe ratio, what's allowed in the area is point three, the existing is point three, and what we are proposing is point three, so we're increasing the habitable living space from three, one thousand three hundred and forty-seven to two thousand six hundred and twenty-six total square feet. The building height is excessive, the intention here is to blend it in with the existing building. We're proposing three stories in total, as it currently is, and the open usable space allowed in the area is eighteen hundred square feet. The existing is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one, and what we are proposing is one thousand three hundred and ninety square feet, so there's a difference of about four hundred and ten square feet. The rear yard allowed is forty feet, the existing, it's nine feet on the left side, and what we are proposing with the new addition is going to be is twenty-five feet. I'm open to any questions, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the homeowner will continue to live in the one unit and will rent the second unit, is that the plan?
Correct, well, the owner lives around, and she's trying to move in one of her daughters on this side.
Okay, and some of these violations appear to be pre-existing from the, I mean, the height, for example, is simply matching the existing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, can we scroll back to the site plan, please? I'm a little, yeah, right there, where is the, where is the curb cut? I see that says existing driveway.
Right, it's right from Stone Hill Road. If you scroll up on the plot, then, right above, not sure if we're able to see it, but it's right on Stone Hill Road, so you'll be able to come in from this road, Stone Hill Road.
And how wide is the current, the existing curb cut?
My understanding is there's not, no curb cut specifically, so the asphalt drap that goes straight in to the property.
Uh huh, okay, okay, all right, so, okay, so, but the entrance is going to be off Radney Road, am I right? It's a little, I'm just, I'm just trying to sort of get a grasp on the configuration of where the driveway is into the, the front of the building.
Right, so the existing front of the building is facing Stone Hill Road, and the proposed addition will be facing Stone Hill Road.
And that's where the driveway is?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking at on Google Maps, there is a driveway, there's, there's basically, definitely a curb cut.
There's a massive curb cut, actually.
There is, okay, my bad.
Yeah, okay, but which sounds to be the existing condition is front yard parking?
It looks like.
Looks like.
Because it faced, the front door does face Stone Hill Road, and that is where the curb cut is, even though, seems like it could face the other road as well, so, but it is currently facing Stone Hill with a very large corner curb cut, too, not all the way around the corner, but right at a crosswalk corner, so I think, I guess if we're talking a little bit, I think that there's, maybe this should be looked at with B T D, just to make sure, you know, this, it looks like there's new, some new paving there, maybe, but it's, it's a little bit, I think it's a little, it seems a little kind of large for this pedestrian corner, honestly, so, but maybe this is an opportunity for us to sort of kind of tighten that up and fix that a little bit.
Okay, well, you spoke exactly to my concern, so, so thank you. Anything else about the drawings that you wanted to come?
No, I think, I think in general, like, proposed addition, I don't really have an issue with. I think, you know, the existing house is, is a little bit mixed match anyways in terms of it, so I think maybe some design review, just to pull the whole thing together and make sure it feels as a consistent whole, I think would be good, but really no questions on the proposal. It's pretty straightforward in terms of the square footage and the unit, the additional units of.
Okay, any questions on the board? Anyone speak for or against the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There's no civic association in this area of coverage in Hyde Park, so the applicants completed the community process, and they notified all of abutters, and I hosted a community meeting that was held on August ninth. We've received no letters of opposition or support for this proposal, and at this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the Board. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, we do have one letter of opposition from the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
What is that letter of opposition based on, Mr. Fortune?
They just opposed to the project.
Okay, and no raised hands, Ms. Dunn, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at Lash, Michael Flaherty. The council just like to go on record in opposition, I believe it might be the same neighbor that's opposed. We received opposition just based upon the size and scope of the addition, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I see the chap, councillor, there's a councillor's representative looking to speak.
Oh, Lucy, okay, yep, Cindy, one second. Cindy, let me just make you a panelist, and I'll unmute you. We should see that, okay, go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, good morning, no, not as of right now, we are at ten thirty, so.
Okay, so you're all set, and, okay, and I'll make you a panelist, though, that way you'll be able to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I think, with B P D A Design Review of the parking and curb cut, to see if we can tighten that up. I also think some design review of the addition and the existing house to ensure that is kind of pulled together as a single. I think especially maybe looking at the entries, the new entry and the existing second, two-family entry, I think need some, a little bit of work to make sure they kind of work together as well, so, that's.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
No.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
I am also in favor, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling V O A one three four eight nine zero five one twenty to one twenty-four Babson Street. This is eighteen independent elderly housing plus adult daycare on ground floor. Violation is Article sixty, section eight, elderly housing is forbidden. Article sixty, section eight, the daycare center is a condition we use, elderly. Name and address for the record, please. Is anybody on for Babson?
Okay, Fatima, I see your hands up. Do you know if the applicant's on?
Hi, I just spoke with, with the applicant, and they wish to defer. I found out that what was supposed to be the abutters meetings, there was no abutters at the meeting, they never came before the council, and there wasn't one, my neighborhood council, nothing was requested, so we set it for our next review date for November seventeenth, and the applicant.
Madam, you're not, you're not the applicant, though? We have to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go back to that one. Mr. Chair, actually, it's ten thirty-six, I'm going to call the ten thirty hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals, so this is ten thirty only for any deferrals or withdrawals. You can give me the address first, if you're going to defer.
Eighty-nine dash ninety-one Union Street, Mr. Secretary.
Hold on a second, councillor, hold on two seconds here.
It has two companion cases, just so you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Calling a ten thirty hearing case for deferral, it's V O A one two five eight six one one eighty-nine to ninety-one Union Street. There are two companion cases, V O A one two five eight six one three ninety-three Union Street, and V O A one two five eight six one six forty-five Shepherd Street. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of Eleven Beacon Street, seeking a deferral and working with both the Council of Brayden's office as well as many of the abutters, we're seeking a deferral to make additional changes and reduce the size of the project.
Has this been deferred before, Mr. Drago?
It has not, Mr. Chair, this is our first.
Okay.
Mr. Drago, just so you know, we have, I don't know how long it's going to take it, but we're into two thousand twenty-three, we do have two open dates for December, but I don't know if it's going to be longer than that.
I, I think if, I think we could, that's fine, if we could get a December date, that would work.
All right.
All right, well, first meeting, the motion.
I motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
One of them.
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
I'm in favor, the motion passes, what's the date?
You'll have a date of December thirteenth at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, sixty-four Clarkwood Street.
Thank you, councillor, hold on two seconds here, we'll back and forth, am I, what was the address again?
Sixty-four Clarkwood Street.
Okay, for the record, calling V O A one two six three seven four zero sixty-four Clarkwood Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small, this is address of two-one Dobson Road, and we are seeking a deferral for sixty-four Clarkwood Street.
Okay, you're seeking a deferral?
That is correct.
What's the reason?
We are going to go back and have another meeting with the great amount of our neighborhood council.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
All right, two support the motion, the motion passes.
Mr. Small, you have the last date in two thousand twenty-two, we'll give you twelve thirteen, at eleven thirty, now to two thousand twenty-three, leave it on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the ten thirty cases? Hearing none, we'll go back to nine thirty. Calling V O A one two eight seven one six eight, one ninety-nine Fuller Street. This is a driveway curb cut for five-ounce street parking, the violation is Article sixty-five, section eight, parking lot used. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, the parking lot use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Olean Griffin, and my dad, John Mitchell. Address is 76 Morris Street.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing, please.
My dad owns the 199 Fuller Street, and he also owns the 76 Morris Street. But he, we're having a little bit of problems with parking over here, so he decided to do some off-street parking. The plan, so he wanted to use the 99, the Fuller Street side as parking for the tenants here at 76 and his kids, pretty much.
And I own the property since 78, and it's every year, it looks like it's getting worse and worse for parking.
Okay, so what's on the, what is the plot used for now?
There's nothing on it.
There's nothing on it, and there's no paving, and what is it, grass or dirt? What is it?
Paving, it's paving, yes.
Oh, it is paving, but it's not used for parking now?
No.
Okay, so there's no curb cut, so you're proposing a curb cut?
Correct.
Okay, and I can't quite tell for the, how wide is the curb cut? Ten feet?
Ten feet, yeah, it's called out as ten feet, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and what will the rest, so I see you've got, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 spaces proposed. What's the rest of this, is the entire lot paved?
No, most of it, the wider part is grass.
Okay, so the idea would be that you would come in the curb cut and go to this existing paved area, and then turn to the left and park, have five parking spaces, and the upper left-hand corner of the lot would continue to be grass?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, Mr. Robinson, any thoughts on these plans?
I think the proposal is fine, so I just want to clarify, so you also will, your tenants will have access from more, correct? Beyond?
Yes.
Side of the building, which is an existing, looks like an existing curb cut and drive lane, I guess past the three-family or whatever number of units is. Okay, I think the only, only thing we should probably do is see if we can, we need to screen and buffer, obviously, parking, so that will be a requirement and provide sort of that aspect of it. So I think there's no question on the proposal, really, except for we should just make sure it gets done right.
I second Mr. Robinson's concern with screening and buffering.
Okay, so you're, for the Griffins, you're aware that, you know, that means landscaping, bushes, trees, whatever, some, some form of making the lot not look just like an empty paved?
Okay.
Okay, all right, very good.
Mr. Chair, I don't think Mr. D'Amico is on, but he did comment on this one, he says 199 Fuller Street is fine.
Okay, good, all right, any other questions on the board? Anyone want to testify or against the proposal?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 199 Fuller Street had a Butters meeting on August 24, 2022, and they also met with the Dorchester Unified Neighborhood Association, which ultimately decided to oppose this project. They cited opposition in regards to current lack of on-street parking spaces and the imposition and difficulties it would place on Fuller Street residents. In total, we haven't received any letters of support for this or any letters of opposition besides that one for this property. So at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter, thank you.
Mr. James, can I ask you a question? I'm a little confused, this is, would be adding parking to the area, so why was there concern about it reducing parking?
At this time, they didn't necessarily specify. I know that generally, many people have concerns about congestion, and they have concerns about the number of cars that would be added to a street. As of now, I know that they said there would be impositions and difficulties that it would place on the Fuller Street residents. I believe they have maybe concerns in regards to congestion, but I do not have those exact answers at this moment.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else who wants to testify?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands, oh, sorry, one hand just popped up. And Alicia, one second. Go ahead, can you, can you state your name and address for the record, please? And Assilia, no one can give testimony here?
Hi, yes, are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, my name's Anaiselia Cravas. I live at 1382 River Street, and I wanted to testify that I'm in support of the project, this being because I live about a block away.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Just one question to the applicant, it doesn't appear, or Eric James, it doesn't seem there's parking on this side of Fuller Street. What it looks like to me, there's parking on the other side, so I can.
No, there's residential parking on Morris Street.
No, on Fuller, on Fuller, is there?
Yeah, the whole street is, is parking.
Both sides?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where the question is coming, because you're adding a curb cut, which would be taking away a street-level parking. However, you're adding five spaces, so I just wanted to clarify that. I have no other questions, I think the proposal is fine, so I just want.
All right, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review for screening and buffering of the off-street parking area.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ogierro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes, so just make sure that you check in with the BPDA about screening and buffering, we take that pretty seriously, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 120-8535, 265 to 265C Minot Street. This erect a new four-story with private roof decks, five-unit townhouse residential building with off-street parking. Violation is Article 65, Section 8, townhouse use forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient, and Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, 10th Road and Braintree. With me this morning is James Christopher on the architectural team, together with Martin Kerr and John Doherty, who are the owners and developers of this proposal. So, excuse me, 265 Minot Street in Dorchester. The zoning in this neighborhood is 2F 6,000, this lot size is 7,478 square feet. Propose us to build a new three-story residential building with five condominium units and six parking spaces totally contained in the building. The internal parking will be assessed on the left side of the building through a shared driveway with 269-271 Minot Street. The violation is multifamily in 2F zone. FAR is a .4 is allowed, we're at .86. Building height is 35 feet, we are at 39 feet. Building stories is two and a half, we're at three. Front yard is 15, we're at 10. Side yard is 10, we're at 46. On the right, and 110, 110 on the left, and that is the area that focuses with the shared driveway. Other than that, we comply with all dimensional requirements, including parking in open space. The building program, I'll just go through that quickly. Unit 1 is 1,238 square feet, it is two bedrooms. Unit 2 is 1,210 square feet, that is also two bedrooms. Unit 3 is 841 square feet, two beds. Unit 4, 841 square feet, two beds, and Unit 5 is 1,248 square foot, that is four beds. Unit 1 and 4 are bi-level units, and Unit 5 is a flat unit. Units 3, 4, and 5 shall have small roof decks, which is step-back, and are specific to those units, accessed through a hatch. And in closing, we went through a lengthy community process, and based upon that, we had reduced the type. We were originally a townhouses, neighborhood didn't want that. We changed the design and shrunk the building, and we provided the board 30 letters of support. Any questions?
Okay, so this is five units in a 2F 2,000 district, is that correct?
2F 6,000, correct.
2F 6,000, I'm sorry, okay, so we are, we're packing it in here, I can see.
But to that point, we do have, it's a very irregular-shaped lot, Mr. Ehrlich, and if you look at, we don't have any open space violations, there's a lot of green space. The people that lived in the rear would like a big buffer, and it's a significant, you'll see on the plans, amount of green space associated with this proposal.
Okay, yeah, keep, okay, and, and tell us about the parking again?
The parking is accessed on the left side of the building, and it is internal inside the building.
Six spaces, Mr. Ehrlich.
Six spaces?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Can I keep scrolling down, please? All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
I think the drawings are fine, you know, I do, it does feel tight, I'll be honest. It's tight, I mean, it is tight on the shared side, but the lot is obviously irregularly shaped, so, you know, I think it's tight, again, on 257 side, which is the right-hand side. But I, you know, it feels a little tight, I'll be honest, but I'm not sure if there's much we can do, and due to the shape of the lot, I mean, I think that, it seems like they're trying to step the building as it moves back to sort of keep some, sort of relief on the right-hand side. I'm not as worried about the left-hand with the drive, the shared drive, which will remain then, so, you know, I think it's a little tight, but other than that, I think the program's fine, and.
And what's your sense about the design context?
I mean, I think it is a little bit further forward, I'd be interested about the front yard. You know, the houses seem a little bit like all over the place, the one next to it's turned against the street, so it is a little bit pulled forward as well. In terms of the aesthetics, I think that, you know, it sort of matches some of the stuff around, but it's all kind of a mismatch anyways, but. So, I'm not sure if I have a strong opinion either way. I do have one question on the roof deck access, you're showing spiral stairs. Is that with hatches, or how are you going?
With hatches.
Yeah, okay, so there's no head houses for that?
No head houses.
Okay.
And Mr. Robinson, we certainly have room to reset the building to the rear.
Yeah.
In an earlier iteration, we had it move forward, and we have plenty of room with the retaining walls. It does increase dramatically after rear, but we can.
I can see, yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly address it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it probably could use a little bit of refining, and I think maybe that's something that you could work with the BPDA on to make sure it fits in a little bit better. But in terms of the sort of edges, I think it, again, a little bit tight to the side yards, but it is a very irregularly shaped lot, so I understand some of the challenges, but.
And as you can see, Mr. Robinson, we tried to provide, if you go down one slide there, you can see on the side that we're facing a Butters, it's not have ownership with this, you can see that we did do screening and buffering along that side.
I saw that, yep, yep, no, I appreciate, I appreciate some of the effort to try to mitigate the sort of lines and edges, so. No real other questions other than that from me, so.
Okay, thank you, and you got, any questions on the board? Anyone here to speak for or against the project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board, back our information on the community process. Our office held in the Butters meeting on April 6th. We received a number of letters in support, 30 in total. There were also a number of Butters in opposition, we received five letters. Those opposition letters cite the density for the size of the lot, an area primarily zoned for one to three families. We also received a letter of opposition from the Ashmont Adams Neighborhood Association. With that, we defer to this report, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, secretary, we do have those letters. The Mayor's Office spoke of both support and opposition.
Okay, the Neighborhood Association's opposition was based on what?
I don't have that letter informing, but I believe it was, echoed the concerns of those five Butters.
It's the size of the project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Joe McGeck with City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support of the applicant today.
Okay, thank you.
Dwayne Watts, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Dwayne Watts, I live at 9 William Street in Roxbury.
Go ahead.
I, I wanted to provide support to the, to the Urban League project, I think it's that, is that this project?
No.
The Minot Street project?
No, no, it's not Minot, it's the one at Warren Street.
Okay, so you can.
We're not on that, yep.
Mary Alice, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record?
Mary Alice Botherland, 273 Minot, which abuts 269-271, which is land also owned by the applicant. That would be used, excuse me?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, so the land at 269-271 abuts 273, our backyard abut. And the driveway that would be needed would be built on that property. So, you know, literally, it's construction in our backyard. My letter of opposition represents the other two owners of this building as well. And one of our main problems is rat infestation. This building is on a third rat infestation. The first rat infestation, I've lived here for 20 years, the first rat infestation occurred after the building of two similar residents, 251 Minot Street and the street that's parallel to Minot Street, the buildings are back-to-back. Excuse me, I also know there's rat infestation at 282 Minot Street, and I know the situation in the city, however, in 20 years, three rat infestations, and as I said in my letter, the rats.
It's gone, we seem to have lost you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, I don't know what happened with Ms. Ellen, but we got the, we got the point about the potential for construction triggering rat infestation. Okay, if no other raised hands, I will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
With design review?
With design review.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, secretary.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ogierro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I think I'm gonna oppose.
Okay, Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Okay, and I am in favor as well, so the motion passes, but there seems to be a fair amount of, the design review needs to be pretty aggressive, I would say, and also be constructive to take into account the Butters' concerns about rat infestation, but the motion passes.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 126-0388, 27 Greenwich Street. This has proposed to demolish the existing structure and erect a three-family with a handicap ramp on the first floor and three off-street parking. Violation is Article 55, Section 65-41, off-street parking insufficient. Article 65, Section 2, the formula in existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 8, the multi-family use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 42.3, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 65, Section 9, laundry area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building has excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of 21 Dobson Road, Braintree. Mr. Chairman, we're here today seeking relief to demolish existing structure and erect a three-family dual unit. The zoning in sub-district areas are 2F 5,000, and our lot size is a block square, 3,600 square feet. Our zoning violations are as follows. Floor area ratio requirement is 0.5, we're proposing 1.4. Building height requirement is 35 feet. We are at 34.6, but we'll be excited for the number of stories as the proposal is for a three-story building. Front yard, 15 feet is the requirement, we're proposing 6.5. Side yard violation, requirement is 10 feet, you have five. You have 5 feet on the right side and 3 and 1/2 feet on the left side of this corner lot. The rear yard violation requirement is 20 feet and we have 5 feet. Again, it's because it's a corner lot. With regard to the units themselves, there are two bedroom units, baths. Their square footage is approximately 1,300 square feet. You can open it up for any questions that.
Now, Mr. Small, the existing structure that was supposed to be demolished is, what, a two-family?
It's a, it's a one-family dwelling.
It's a one-family?
That's correct. And we're proposing a three.
Right. So, just a quick look at Google Maps. It seems as if three stories is a little, is higher than most of the buildings in the adjacent buildings. Is that true? I can't quite, not.
I believe that is correct. Yes, a little bit higher.
Okay, yeah, I see mostly, it looks like mostly two-story buildings in the neighborhood. Yeah, well, some mixed, some mixed, all right. And you're pretty much covering the entire lot?
That is correct. There's room for some screen space in the front where there is some existing parking, but we're removing that and moving all of the parking spaces along with.
Your volume just went down. You're removing all the parking where?
No, I said there is a front yard parking space which we're removing that currently exists. And we're going to put the parking, two parking spaces in the rear of the building.
Right, okay, okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The drawings are fine in terms of the proposal. You know, I do think it feels a little dense for the site for certain. You know, I think that they are filling the site and providing the parking off the side street. I just feel like it's a little too dense and it's pushing tight up against the right-hand side property line as well, the way that it's being configured on the site. So, drawings are fine. I just feel like maybe it's just a little bit too tight, too dense. It's my sort of gut reaction of it. No other questions in that?
Mr. Chair, Secretary here. Mr. D'Amico has spoken. I'd like to put his comments in for the record.
Go ahead.
Regarding 27 Greenwich Street, it does not have a new curb cut shown on their plans. Although Marlin Street is only 15 feet wide, he would like to see another new curb cut location.
Marlin Street, Marlin Street doesn't have curbs.
Right.
It's, I don't, I'm not sure what, yeah.
It looks like, yeah, it looks like it's just a private way that is paved, but it has no curves and so you just pull into the side of the.
No, I don't think he, I don't think he wants to see it on Marlin Street.
Ah, oh, he wants to see it reconfigured to the front.
Correct.
Ah, gotcha.
Yeah, the intent is to pull in off of Marlin Street directly with no curb cut. There are no sidewalks.
I don't know how it would get reconfigured to the front, but, because it's barely any room. There's barely any room to do anything, though. All right, any questions on the board? Anyone want to testify in for or against the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer its judgment to the board. Background information on the community process, our office held in the butters meeting on January 6th. There were some initial concerns from residents in the butters regarding the lack of green space and the height, although the applicant made some changes to that to address those concerns, such as green space in the front of the building. The Fields Corner Neighborhood Association did not take a vote on this. They were disagreeing with the applicant regarding some drainage concerns and wanted to see where exactly a catch basin would be placed potentially ahead of time for the project. So, they did not take a stance on that. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Was there, Mr. Small, was there an adjustment made to the height or just the front there?
Yeah, initially, we had proposed a roof deck in the original presentation and we removed the roof deck as a result of meeting with the Fields Corner Civic Association.
Okay.
So, that brought it down.
Okay.
So, that wasn't included.
Any other, any other public testimony?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McGeck and City Council, Frank Baker's office. We're hoping that the applicant could request a deferral today. We just think he needs to work more with the neighborhood and the civic association and address their concerns.
Okay, Carol, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Carla Brashan and I live in 511 Norfolk Street, Maripan. I'm here for 64 Quacko Street.
Oh, okay, we're on Greenwich Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Councilor Baker's office. The councilor would support a deferral. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, but can I just ask people really quick to pay attention to the screen? I'm trying to make people panelist so that it's easier to navigate. You have to accept that designation once it pops up, so.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, for that clarification. There seems to be, I mean, this is a dense proposal and there seems to be some sentiment to have the applicant continue to work to come with a proposal that's more acceptable. The two city councils propose a deferral. In some ways, that makes sense to me. I'm not quite sure what can really be done. I mean, there's such limits in terms of the plot, but I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion actually to deny without prejudice. I think, you know, it's a 2F 5,000 and it's only a 3,600 square feet. So, I'm struggling with the third unit. So, I will make a motion to deny, deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
I'm muted.
I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb? Are you unmuted?
I think I took off mute too fast, yes.
Okay, well done, good recovery. All right, and I also support that motion. I think that there's a solution here, but I don't think that the one that's being presented is exactly the best. So, the motion is to deny without prejudice.
Understood. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good day.
Mr. Chair, it's now 11:08. I'm gonna call the 11 o'clock. We had the subcommittee last Thursday on the 13th.
Yep.
Call it into the record. Calling the first, calling the cases, case BOA 1358896, 16 Cook Street was to confirm occupancy as a two-family dwelling. It was approved with BPDA for dormer and exterior elevation. Case BOA 1349606417 to 423C West Broadway was a suite 406, change of professional office and petition. It was approved with revisal to this applicant only. The next two cases, BOA 1268377 594 East 7th Street and BOA 1337665 596 East 7th Street was to change the architecture of a single-family, two-dwelling proposed. It was approved with a revisal BPDA for side windows and design. The 596 East 7th Street was a confirmed architecture of a single-family and changed architecture of a single-family to a two-family. It was, it was approved with no bedroom in the basement. Case BOA 1370220 25 Brooks Avenue was a curb cut for one vehicle. It was approved with revisal, reduced the curb cut to 10 feet. Case BOA 1349675 4 Dever Street, demolition of existing porch, it was approved. Case BOA 135033877 Lachmont Street was a small addition in the back of the house with elevator, bathroom, downstairs and closet. It was approved. Case BOA 1153626276 Fairmont Avenue was a renovation extension of living space in the rear of the house and was approved with BPDA. The two proposed pool to comply with all zoning. Case BOA 1334004 13 Austin Street was adding a farmer's fortune, it was approved. Case BOA 1353585 41 Nickish Avenue was a construction of a new master bedroom, was approved with BPDA for dormers. Case BOA 1361549 35 Woolley Street was a smaller addition located at the rear of the existing house. It was approved. Case BOA 1385565 10 to 12 Ridgemont Street was an accessibility project, had one story of 144 square feet, the first floor bedroom for a disabled student, son. It was approved. And on the rediscussion, case BOA 1265152 10 Carson Street, it was deferred to the December 8, 22 subcommittee meeting at 1010 Mass Ave. That concludes the subcommittee's report.
Motion to the recommendation to the subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
I say yes, motion passes.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the 9:30, but before I do that, this one's gonna be a long one, so is the applicant on for Warren Street before I go into all the details?
Yes, sir, Mr. Secretary.
All right, thank you.
You know, Mr. Fortune, whatever happened to the Bassett Street? Did we ever locate the applicant?
Well, we haven't concluded the 9:30 case, so we're gonna leave that to the end.
Okay, that's fine.
We're still at 9:30, so I'll do that at the end.
Okay.
Case, calling a next, calling a next case, calling BOA 129830117 Warren Place. This to combine three lots into a newly created single lot of 20,193 square feet. Direct a six-story mixed-use building comprised of 65 residential units, adult education center, office, and 24 parking spaces. The proposed project will be constructed of a single-level steel podium over slab-on-grade with five levels of residential wood frame. The height shall be no less than 70 feet in the 90 high-rise and the entire building will be sprinkled. Violation is Article 50, Section 28. The MFR in a 3F 4,000 use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 28, the office in a 3F 4,000 use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 28, an adult education center in a 3F 4,000 use is conditional. Article 50, Section 28, the office in an MFR LS use is conditional. Article 10, Section 1, parking within 5 feet of the side lot line. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Down to MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient for a 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the foyer ratio is excessive for a 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the foyer ratio is excessive for an MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories for an MFR. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories for a 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet for the MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet for the 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the usable space for a 3F 4,000 is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, usable space is insufficient for the MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient for a 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient for an MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient for a 3F 4,000. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient for an MFR LS. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient for a 3F 4,000. The rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, for an MFR LS. And Article 50, Section 44.3, the traffic visibility across the corner. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, I plan to recuse myself based on my prior association with the applicant.
Thank you. So, we have a six, that means we have a six-member board, which means that you are entitled to administer a deferral should you so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to proceed.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Secretary, Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Qualty and Miller. I am here with the partnership of the ownership and the proponent. My client, Madison Park Development Corp. in Tia, and Bogie Azaza is with us, as well as Meg Regan from Madison Park. Also with me is Joseph Feaster, Attorney Joe Feaster, who is Chair of the Board of Directors for the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, who is the owner in joint venture with my client at this location. The site is a unique property site, a corner lot with two fronts, one on Warren Street, one on Warren Place, just outside of Newby and Square, about 20,193 square feet of land. It exists with a two-story commercial building, which has been the headquarters of the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts for 27 years. There is a large surface parking lot towards, along Warren Place at its other front. And as was read into the record, it's split between two zoning districts, an MFR LS, which is along Warren Street, it's more commercial side, and a 3F 5,000. The long existing uses do not conform to that. Again, it's been a parking lot and a commercial building. The proposed project is a joint venture between the two established local nonprofits, would provide for a new headquarters for the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, about 7,500 square feet of space, in a six-story building of approximately 82,500 square feet. We are looking to introduce residential, which is a conforming use at the MFR and is consistent with the 3F 5,400. 65 residential units total. There is a mix of both homeownership and rental, 22 condos, 43 rental units, 10 of which are three-bedroom units, no studios, and they're all income-restricted, affordable housing for a range of income levels. 24 parking spaces on-site, new bicycle parking. And as part of the Article 80 process for large project review, we're doing a significant amount of new sidewalk and connectivity improvements, including granting some pedestrian easements from our property itself. There are also outdoor decks as part of the residential. As far as the zoning goes, Mr. Chair, was read into the record, the reason for the number of these violations, again, is because we're split between two zoning districts. About 5,220 square feet of land is in the MFR LS. The remaining 14,937 in the 3F 4,000 where the vast parking lot is today. Building height required or allowed is 45 in the MFR, 35 in the 3F. We're at 70 feet, but we have variations that's been worked through this extensive design process through Article 80. The open space that's required is 200 square feet per dwelling unit in the MFR, 650 in the 3F. We have approximately 300 total. The front yard is a 20-foot setback. As I mentioned, there are two front yards on this site. And footnote, Section 44.2 notes conformity with building alignments, which we have on Warren Street. And we also think that, you know, we're consistent with that or trying to be consistent with the context of introducing the new building on Warren Place. The rear yard requirement is 20 and 30. Our rear yards are towards the interior of the site. We only have one, a butter, and that's on that section, and that's the Gordon Cromwell Theological Society. They're here in support. And the side yard requirement is 10 feet on both. And we are 1.5 feet off with some other design and building setback. We also are proposing an MFR, which is, you know, extends into the combined lot where there is a 3F 4,000 designation. Finally, with respect to the process, Mr. Chairman, I submitted for the board a memo in support of the variances. It included the BPDA's board recommendation we filed for Article 80 review back in September of 2021, went through an extensive process, two cuts of IUG formation. As the new city councilor got established, we've earned lots of support and we've also tried to work with some of the concerns and the opponents that we've heard from as well. And you have a full accounting of those letters, including in support from our direct of butter, the Gordon Cromwell Society, and elected officials and some organizations, as well as IUG members. If I may, I'd like to just turn it over briefly to Attorney Feaster, talk about the ULAM, and then have Kendra Hollowell, who is also with us, from Icon Architects, as the project architect. Attorney Feaster? Attorney Feaster?
Thank you very much, Attorney Hanley. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joseph Feaster. In my capacity as Chairman of the Board of the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, 88 Warren Street, Roxbury, Mass. 02119. Attorney Hanley has represented to, and presented to you the project in totality as to what we're proposing there, but I wanted to put it in context and give you the rationale for this, and also elaborate a little bit more on the extensive community process. We're speaking of an organization, Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts, which is 103 years old. We've been at this location, which was previously the phone company. We've owned that property for the past 27 years. We have run programs, community-based programs out of there for all that duration, and certainly throughout our history as a 103-year organization. We weren't at this location, obviously, during that entire timeframe. When we thought about this project six years ago, we went through an exhaustive process of communicating with our abutters, our Warren Place, in particular, with the Gordon Cromwell Theological, which is our immediate abutter, and we went through an exhaustive process even before we entertained a collaboration with Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And we wanted to make sure that we, one, were able to maintain our office and program space at that particular location, having been there for so many years, at a very iconic corner there in Nubian Square. Additionally, what we wanted to do was to have housing, both residential and homeownership. That's a pillar of what the Urban League is all about, and we wanted to make sure that it was affordable and that homeownership, we wanted to talk about building wealth within the black and brown community in Roxbury. Extensive community process is noted in, I'm sure, the letters that you received, and you will hear more on that, hopefully, as we go further into this hearing today. Certainly encourage the board to look critically at this project. I think it adds an important dimension for Nubian Square. We're excited about our collaboration with Madison Park. We intend to continue our community-based program, which primarily is providing job training and all types of educational programs for all ages, an intergenerational approach in our community, and many of the programs we have right now, such as our computer program, whereby persons who can come to the Urban League utilize our computer labs in order to do that. We have training programs in graphic arts, we have training programs in computer literacy, and we just want to be able to continue that in this location, and that's the reason why we brought forward this project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Feaster. Let me, Mr. Hanley, before, let me just ask you a bunch of questions, and
Yes, sir.
Then you or the architect can respond, you know, I'll leave it to you guys. So, this is your sort of standard one-floor, floor of steel, wood frame above podium, right?
Correct.
That's a construction method, and is this slab-on-grade? There's no underground?
Correct.
Yeah, Kendra Hollowell from Icon Architects, that's correct.
Okay, so, so here's what I'm trying to understand is, I totally agree with Mr. Feaster, this is an iconic corner, I'm very familiar with a lot. The Urban, how will the first floor be utilized in terms of a combination of office space for the, you know, Urban League and parking? What, how, if we could maybe go to a slide on that and just explain that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kendra, can you direct the ambassador to the correct slide for that?
Thanks.
We have two fronts, and we're utilizing that. Warren Street, of course, the Urban League, and Warren Place for the residential, but I'll let Kendra go through that.
Right, it looks like we're looking at the zoning submission, so for the zoning submission, it looks, if you go to page 14.
Madam Ambassador, if you have the presentation deck we have rendered for plans.
This is what we, this is what we have, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so page 14 and 30, I believe, gets us to a great overall floor plan set, that's wonderful. Are you able to zoom in?
Yep.
All right, um, right, so the pink script to orient us all along the left-hand side of the page is Warren Street, which is a grander scale, institutional scale. Warren Place along the top of the sheet here is a more residential scale, so the building's broken up into essentially three volumes, three entrances. The pink section here is the Urban League that establishes and holds its prominence on Warren Street with a primary entry corner.
It had 7,500 square feet before, will it have about the same going forward?
It will have 7,500 square feet for programming in that, in that space, yes.
It'll be on the corner facing Warren Street and the corner of Warren Street and Warren Place, so that will be unchanged?
Correct.
Okay.
Then did I s-
And then I'm asking about from, as we're looking at the drawing, to the right, from the pink area to the right, is that pretty much all parking and lobby? Is there, I guess what I'm asking, is there any other commercial office utilization?
No, no, there's a small, efficient residential entry, and then the, you can see the right-hand portion is efficiently laid out parking for 24 cars.
All right, then that clarifies my question, and how many parking spaces are there?
24 parking spaces.
Okay, for 65 units.
Yeah, and.
How are those gonna get a lot of, to the, you know, a lot of competition for those spots?
So, six, six of the spaces are dedicated to the Urban League, 18 to the residential uses. We also worked really closely through the Article 80 process for large project review to introduce bike parking, but also to make investments monetary and in kind to the sidewalks and the connectivity there to enhance walkability. Obviously, ULAM is a, you know, local-based organization.
Okay, well, let's keep this, I wanna keep it simple. So, six of the spots are allocated to the Urban League?
Yes, sir.
Which leaves 18 for 65 units.
Yes, sir.
Are any of those dedicated, or does it first come, first served?
They're unbundled.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know.
Of course, we have, you know, 10 three-bedroom units, which we're pretty proud of. It's likely that, you know, those three-bedroom units would be the ones that would, you know, probably prioritize parking as far as the need goes. We're also programming this, I know that you hear this a lot, but through the Article 80 process, as a T, you know, transit-oriented development.
No, I get all that, I'm just trying to-
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
We also have overnight use of those Urban League spaces for the residential use.
Okay, all right, okay, after 6 o'clock or something, or after 5, okay. All right, and is the entrance to the Urban League on Warren Street or on Warren Place?
It's at the corner, if, Stephanie, if you could go to the first page of the study, shows the primary perspective that might answer some of these questions, all the way at the top.
So, the entrance for the Urban League, though, on Warren Street, correct, Kendra?
Correct, yes.
All right, okay.
That's the reason for the address. We, in working with ISD, they had assigned us 17, that's the main entrance for the residential, which, as you'll see here, is to the left.
Okay, all right, I get it. Okay, Mr. Robinson, you have any, any question? How are the drawings?
The drawings are good, it definitely went through the Article 80 large project, I've followed it a little bit. I think it does a nice job of transitioning from a corner condition at a fairly large scale in terms of Warren, down Warren Place, so I think it's actually quite nice, and I think no questions in terms of the use or the zoning violations. I think it's setting a nice precedent from the standpoint of the streetscape and the relationship of the building to the pedestrian areas, so no questions for me on the proposal.
Okay, and the only other question I have, have to do with the open space, how are you resulting the requirement?
Yeah, Kendra, do you wanna handle that?
We're increasing the public ground by widening the sidewalks, but we are not including open space, we're asking for relief on that.
We are having a deck, outdoor deck program as well?
I don't believe we do.
Okay.
Okay, no balconies or anything? Okay.
No.
All right, any questions?
Wait, sorry, I'd like to say the city is the playground.
That can be used on any project, right? Okay, any questions in the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak for or against this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was four abutters meetings held for this project, they did receive strong neighborhood opposition. The neighbors feel that the questions they had weren't really answered, and the changes that they wanted weren't very much considered. They feel as if it would cause serious harm to the neighborhood, and would like to defer until the new ZBA is in place. They, I was told that they never told community that they started off with 90 units, went down to 65, and they feel they shouldn't be any more than 10 units. I believe there's a, they also touched upon the affordability piece, and they want 80% AMI, which doesn't match the Roxbury AMI, and the renaming of the proposal from 84 to 88 Warren confused a lot of community members in terms of bringing it up, in terms of submitting their opposition to this, myself and the ZBA. And other comments was it lacks green space on the property, and the building's height and density is too green, and at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, so as I understand your summary of the comments of the opponents, it had to do with density and the formula for affordability, those are the two major concerns?
Yes, but also the building height as well.
Building height, okay.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we have those letters at the Mayor's Office as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, my name is Dwayne Watts, I live at 9 William Street, which is about a clock and a half away from the project, and I support the project, and I support the project for primarily two reasons. One, Urban League has been an outstanding community partner, three of my four children have participated in programming out of Urban League. Their programming is needed for the underserved community, they've been a great community partner. And then, secondly, the project contains homeownership units, and it contains homeownership units that are affordable to families at 110% AMI, 100% AMI, and 80% AMI. In Roxbury residents, this is a great opportunity for folks to secure affordable housing at affordable prices, and these units can be obtained through multiple first-time home-buying programs such as mass housing, MHP, and Section 8 to homeownership. So, I fully support this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wish there was more.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all salute to the Council of Large Michael Flaherty, Council of All Record and Support.
Okay. Stephen, from Counselor Fernando's office, can you go ahead?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here representing Counselor Fernando Zanderson, who is in support of the additional housing and homeownership units in the range of affordability as project presents. However, we think that any project going into a historically under-invested neighborhood should contribute to improving the neighborhood's quality of life. The community advocate groups, Mount Pleasant and Vine, Roxbury United Neighbors, Roxbury Path Forward, and Roxbury RMC, in addition to the District 7 Advisory Council, which consists of all the civic leaders in the community are united in their request for green space and additional community amenities to be added to this current proposal. In order for this project to move forward, we would like to see the community's requests implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the panel, Robert George, Executive Director with Roxbury Main Street, 2334 Washington Street. We see this as an integral part of the ongoing development of Nubian Square and the surrounding community. Two things that stand out in this project is that it's done by the Warner Partners, the Madison Park Development Corporation, which has a long history of housing development in the community, and doing it very successfully, and no one needs to speak for the Urban League, for the rich history that they have throughout this country and here in Massachusetts and in Nubian Square. The learning opportunities, the classroom where they provide the residential affordability units, we all think that this is just part of the critical piece of moving Nubian Square development forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minor?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. We'd like to go on reverence, strong support of this project, and kudos to the developer for the great outreach to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I, yes, I have, if appropriate, Mr. Chair, because I, I feel compelled to have to respond to the representative of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, who I recognize is new in her position, having been there less than a year, I believe, and as I indicated early on, we have been at this for some seven years. I also direct the board to the fact that throughout this process, and certainly during the Article 80 process, we had numerous community meetings, and I believe we have more than 65 letters of support. This, the references that the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services mentioned are persons who are even not our abutters to this particular project, this may be persons who live in a number of different places, but as I stated in my earlier remarks, we devoted quite a bit of time to being sensitive to the concern of our abutters, and you may, you will be hearing us from Gordon Theological, who's our immediate abutter. Our residents along Warren Place are, have been in favor of it, and we met with them. So, this pronouncement, that is the overwhelming opposition, I just take issue with, and I would have the light for the board to consider that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feaster. All right, anybody else?
Yep, still have a few raised hands.
How many do we have?
I have three, oh, four.
All right, I would ask people to be brief in their comments and indicate their support or opposition, and only give us new information. Let's go ahead.
Go ahead, Connie.
Hi, Connie, 47 Wobec Street, I'm a long-term resident in Roxbury area. Three points I'd like to point out, the Urban League is not gaining or using any space, they're basically going from a service industry to a residential or homeownership model, because they're now adding all these additions and going residential. The height was based on a church steeple as being their judgment for the height being appropriate. A church steeple is not residential, so they should never have done that. In terms of open space, it's nice to say that someone else should take care of your open space, but I think it's a responsibility of the developer to have open space, especially if you have units that have three apartment buildings, and is very likely to have children, and children should not be forced to cross multiple streets to go play when there should be something on-site for these young people, so I think it's unacceptable. In terms of the addressing, it was very confusing for residents, I agree, we should defer this until there's a meeting of the minds in terms of the address, and also the community's concerns are addressed. And in terms of abutters, I'm sorry, but Nubian Square is serving, serves a huge community, it's not people who sit right next door to it, it's served for decades in generations, multiple people, and to say that only people who sit right there have, are gonna be impacted is very rude and disrespectful, so I think that should be.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, Nia? Can you state your name and address so we can record, please?
Hi, my name is Nia Beverly, and I live at 3 Langford Park in Roxbury. My kids go to, have attended the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club, and I am a frequent shopper in the Nubian Square area, so I'm very, and I've lived in this neighborhood practically all my life. There's no question that the Urban League does tremendous advocacy work for underserved members of our community, and that's appreciated and not disputed. I think that the majority of the, you know, the people who are giving their, they're not opposing the project and giving approval for the project are basically giving approval because of that tremendous advocacy work, and the fact that they are offering homeownership opportunities, which is all great, but we are here to discuss the 22 variances that have been requested for the project, and that is the zoning board's authority here, and not necessarily judging the work that the Urban League does. And I would disagree with the statement that there's been an effort to address concerns- that there's been an effort to address concerns around the variances with different community groups in the area. And I do not agree that the city is the playground for children. And I do agree that people need green space. The emissions that will be released because of this building need to be offset by some green space on the grounds. They could, there could be a design that allows for more green space, either on the front edge, which would be most appreciated, or on the balcony, or on the roof, or some additions of balconies. There's, some people say, I mean, there's some confusion here. Are there balconies? Are there balconies? It sounds like one of the architects.
We need to keep the, thank you very much for your testimony. This issue of green spaces come up several times, and it's something that we will take into consideration in our deliberations. Anymore?
Oral?
Yes, my name is Gerald Day. I'm the Operations Manager here at Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. We're a direct Butter to the Urban League at ninety Warren Street, and we'd like to go on record as full support of this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
No additional raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chair.
This went through with the PDA process, right?
Absolutely. We are recommending approval with continued design review on this. Went through the Article eighty process.
This issue of green space and open space keeps coming up. Is this something that was discussed? Do you think there's room to improve the design?
No, with all Article eighty projects, there's always a continuing design review on this, so we can take another look at it, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please, from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review to look at the potential adding of some exterior space for the units. Looking at the site constraints, I understand on the ground floor, probably not likely, but I do think there could be the ability to add some decks or balconies on the building. So I think that would be a nice aspect to review as you move through the final process.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Regaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
And I too am in favor. I think this is a really important site in the community, and I think it deserves the best treatment it can get. So I hope there's some good revisions that can get made to improve the current proposal. But the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Chair, it's now eleven forty-five. We haven't even completed the nine thirty cases. We just wanted to get into the eleven thirty cases for any deferrals and withdrawals. If anybody is going to defer their eleven thirty case, or either withdrawal or deferral, to give me the address first, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Akash Lala of Five.
What's the address?
Yep, Five Magnolia Place.
And you're deferring?
I am.
Okay, for the record, calling DOA one-two-eight zero-four-two-three, Five Magnolia Place. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Akash Lala, a Five Magnolia Place homeowner. I'd like to defer, I recently made a revision to the plan that triggered a new coding violation.
Okay.
It has to be re-advertised.
Okay, all right. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Regaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
I too am in favor. Can we have a date, please?
We'll have a date of January tenth of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the eleven thirty cases only? Okay.
All right, we have a lot of cases packed into nine thirty, so I'll try to get through them.
Yes. I'm going to call the next case, calling DOA one-three-five zero-six-two-eight, ten thirty-three Massachusetts Avenue. This is to add live entertainment, no work to be done. The violation, Article fifteen, section thirty-two. Use in restaurant thirty-seven, thirty-six A with live entertainment use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney Jennifer Allen for Casa Bonita. Business address, three Pearl Street. I represent Food Fiesta Group Casa Bonita and the owner, who is also logged on. If you have any questions, I'll make this quick for you. As mentioned, there's no work to be completed, as he's recently opened and renovated the whole restaurant already. He seeks to cater to the patrons and the businesses of the surrounding area. He's looking to have live entertainment and a DJ playing Friday, Saturday, Sunday, starting around eight PM. Eventually, possibly increasing those number of days if there is more of a demand from the community. The live music will be held inside the restaurant. This caters to the surrounding social, economic, and community needs of this area. Total capacity of this building is, of the restaurant is sixty-six, which also includes outdoor seating, which is only seasonal. The owner, Mr. Duran, also owns another restaurant with an entertainment license, which he has held for over a decade. His qualifications and experience in this field will ensure the sustainability of the restaurant and safety of the patrons while bringing some new life and food to the area. He has no record of any violations. There are other vendors in the vicinity with entertainment licenses, such as Donna Havana and Home Run Cafe. So granting this license will be, will not alter the character of the IDA and will be in harmony with it. The nature of the music with the food will be Mexican, such as mariachi bands. It will not be too loud or offensive to the other businesses in the IDA. It will not disturb any of the adjoining residential districts, and he will also have security to ensure the safety of the public and the patrons. You have any questions?
Yeah, okay, so looking at the floor plan, where will the musicians be located?
I'm going to let Mr. Duran speak upon that, as he already has that figured out.
Mr. Duran, are you there?
I know he is logged in. I don't know if he has to raise his hand.
Okay, let me ask you, while we're waiting for him, let me ask you one question. You said the music would start at eight, what time will it end?
It would end upon, a little prior to closing, so.
And when is closing?
Two AM.
Okay.
And he's happy to work with that as well.
Okay, I see there's outdoor seating, correct?
Yes, there's, so there's forty-two seats inside and twenty-four outside. The outside is seasonal.
I'm not concerned about the number of seats. What I am concerned about is when, in the season, when it's open, are the doors open and the music will not just be heard inside the restaurant, but also out on the street?
No, it will not. The doors will be closed. The only thing that they would be looking to have is a little bit of background music outside, but the doors will be shut, so it's not to disturb the outside area.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, did we get the owner on the Zoom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, so, yeah, Mr. Duran, could you tell us where the musicians would be located on the floor plan?
Basically, we're trying to make room for them on the right side of the plan, because we have, like, as you can see, a large, I mean, seating area, which to locate them on the right side of the floor plan, because we have a large area.
Okay, and as I asked the attorney, the doors will be closed to the outside seating when the music is being played?
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Robinson, there's not much point in asking you how the drawings are since they.
Drawings are fine, the drawings are fine. I just have one quick question. The address, it says ten thirty-three, but isn't this actually, that's, isn't that the Liquor Land address? Is this, this is ten, it's a different address, right? Just to make sure, looking at the.
So it's a plaza, so there's, it's basically various suite numbers. So it is also, there's the store right next to it, which is also ten thirty-three, but I think it's just various different numbers.
So this is the old, it was like henhouse chicken?
Yes, yep.
Okay, got it. I just want to make sure I understood the site, okay.
Correct, that's the place.
No questions from me, thank you.
So the folks at ten-ten will be hearing the music then, right?
Mr. Fortune will be hearing.
If you want to.
All right, any questions from the board? Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the proposal?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. And a Butters meeting was held on August twenty-fourth, where there was a low attendance, but the attendance did show support of the project. Yeah, at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, I entertain a motion. We might want to think about a ending time. Going music till two AM seems a little possibly excessive, but I'll leave that to anyone who wants to make a motion. Anyone from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve with an ending time of one AM.
I'll second that, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Regaro?
No.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Okay, I think one is a little late for me, but I vote no, but the motion passes five to two. So it is approved with a one AM closing.
Thank you.
I call the next case, calling DOA one-two-nine four-four-three-six, one-eight-six I Street. This is to extend the living area of the first floor unit into lower level. Violation, Article sixty-eight, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Timothy Johnson, architect, five ninety-nine East Broadway, South Boston. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, one-eight-six I Street is an existing three-story, three-family row house. My client purchased this three-family in two thousand nineteen, and the floor plans have remained unchanged. We are proposing, if you go to the former slide, please. First slide, thank you. We are proposing to formalize six hundred and eighty-nine square feet of the existing lower level to living area for media and home office use. The existing lower level has eight-foot-plus clear ceilings and windows at both exterior walls. It is also in a non-flood zone. It also has access to the street from the front and the rear of the building. Finally, we are seeking relief for FAR, which in this zoning district, MFR is two-point-zero. We are at two-point-three. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking at the schematic, and it looks like one end, it's maybe, I can't quite see the numbers, but the height, the floor to grade is, front and back is what?
In the front, Mr. Chairman, is four feet. In the rear is two feet.
Yeah, okay. And this is strictly a media room, right? This is no bedrooms or kitchen downstairs?
That's correct, media or office.
Okay, all right. How are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
The drawings are fine, no question, and the grade doesn't drop, so.
Right. Any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the project?
Sorry, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. ONS held in a Butters meeting for one-eight-six I Street on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Noah Butters attended the meeting, but the head of the Neighborhood Association, where the property lies, was there, and he said the proposal was reasonable. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep, I have two raised hands here. Anna, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, Malala, the chair members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Thanks, and then Anna, I'm going to make you a panelist, thanks. Millard, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Millard Hennessy. I'm in Conduit, Massachusetts. I'm the owner of the building, and I'd like to let you know that they are rental units, and they will continue to be rental units.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, due to Article sixty-eight violations, the council would go on record in opposition.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, just with the proviso, no bedrooms in this lower level, even though it's not being proposed, so.
There is. All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Regaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Tim Johnson? I just want to thank the board for your great service over the years. Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-three six-eight-one-one, one-ninety West Fifth Street. This installs a spiral staircase, the existing rear second floor deck egress. Violation, Article sixty-eight, section eight, insufficient rear setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Taylor Ferguson, contractor of record. Business address, two-forty East Eighth Street, South Boston. We are proposing the installation of a spiral staircase on the rear existing porch for this three-family, three-story unit building. The existing rear porch does not have egress to the ground, and we are looking to create an egress with a spiral staircase.
Okay, so what's the existing situation?
The existing situation is the, we're exceeding the setback in the rear yard. The spiral staircase will come directly up next to an existing vinyl fence that's completely closed off to the rear Butters.
Okay, all right, got it. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
No questions. The spiral staircase is within the existing back edge, so it's not making anything worse, so I think no issues here.
Okay, any questions in the board? Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. On August twenty-second, ONS hosted a Butters meeting for one-ninety West Fifth Street. Noah Butters attended. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Malala, the chair members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty, although this dance with reference to Article sixty-eight has remained consistent, there are projects that do have merit and therefore would defer to the board in this matter.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a raised hand here, Taylor Ferguson?
Sorry, that is on the contractor record, was just.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Again.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Regaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Have a great day.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-four eight-seven-six-five, one-fifty-five Portland Street. This project consists of a nine-story hotel addition to the existing Onyx Hotel at one-fifty-five Portland Street. The addition will be developed on five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square foot parking lot, immediately butting the hotel. Project will add approximately forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five row square feet and seventy-seven hotel rooms. Violation, Article twenty-five, section five, flood hazard district. Article thirty-two, section four, this is de-cultability. Article forty-six, section eight, this is in the Bull Finch Triangle District. We do group competitions with Bull Finch Triangle District. Article forty-six, section six, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. On Article forty-six, section six, the building height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you and good afternoon. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Johanna Schneider with the law firm of Penn and Lambard, seventy-five. with the Law Firm of Pennam Lambard, 75 State Street in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the Onyx Hotel located at 155 Portland Street. We are seeking zoning relief for a 77-room addition to the existing hotel, which will be located in what currently is an underutilized surface parking area. Just to give the board a little quick history of the site, the Onyx Hotel was originally approved by the BPDAs and this board in 2002. The hotel opened in 2005. It currently has 112 guest rooms with some limited accessory ground floor restaurant space. In February 2020, after an extensive and successful community process, the BPDAs board approved the addition, and then, of course, COVID hit, and we don't need to go into what that did to the hospitality industry, but suffice to say, it brought a temporary halt to the project. As the pandemic began to wind down, we reconnected with the city and the community, and we are here today seeking zoning relief for the addition in order to bring much-needed hotel rooms to a highly walkable area of the city. Hopefully, they're still on with us. We did have several neighbors here to speak in support of the project, and you should have received a letter of non-opposition from the West End Civic Association. Everyone that we've talked to in the neighborhood sees this project as a good thing for the neighborhood. It's an expansion of a successful existing use. From an urban design standpoint, it will fill in a missing tooth on both Portland Street and Friend Street. And by replacing a surface parking lot, it will improve the pedestrian experience on both of those streets. It also will provide an opportunity for expanded ground floor activity on Portland Street, including a better lobby and ground floor restaurant space. Another amenity that we will be providing as part of the project is a rooftop terrace restaurant bar, which will be open to the public. We heard from many folks in the neighborhood that they were particularly excited about this, and it is certainly in keeping with several of the hotels approved by the board in recent years. I want to briefly turn this over to Harry Wheeler from Group One to walk through the proposal. Harry, are you on?
Yes, I am, thank you, John. Harry Wheeler, Principal of Group One Partners on West Third Street here in Boston. If you could please back up one slide, thank you. The existing Onyx Hotel, as John mentioned, is outlined here in the red dotted line. The proposed addition is in blue, which is currently a temporary parking lot that is utilized by the existing Onyx Hotel. Moving to the next slide, we show the proposed ground floor and lower level basement plan. Ground floor plan on the right, you will see that working left to right or north to south. We are providing a new restaurant, which will have walkable window wall, which will then accent and activate the Portland Street pedestrian realm. The lobby on the right-hand side, again, is much more open. Right now, the existing hotel is, you know, very small, so we're utilizing all this street frontage on Portland Street to create open space and transparency into the project and create a great food and beverage outlet. The building does span from Portland Street to the east, which goes all the way to Friend Street, which is where we'll have our loading zone and receiving area. We do have a basement level, which has a lot of unexcavated area, and we're connecting our new stairwells and some storage areas and some also resiliency-prepared as storage space. Next slide, please.
Before you go on, the basement plan, this is in the flood district, correct?
Yes, it is.
So you're limited by what you can do there.
Yes, so all essential equipment is located above the floodplain in the first floor or second floor. The basement is really for access of the elevator pits, the egress stair, some non-essential equipment and storage.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Yep, thank you. On the right-hand side, we have our typical guest room plan, where you can see the gray shaded area of the existing hotel. We'll be connecting at a midway point into a hallway, which will then access the new addition, our new stair, and the 77 new guest rooms. On the left-hand side, we are removing a few guest rooms in the existing hotel to provide some much bigger back-of-house space for the roof deck, which is shown here on the left. It'll have an exterior space of about 1,200 square feet and an enclosed area, bar lounge, and again, open to the public. This interior space will be open to the roof deck, and we'll have great views towards North Station. Next slide, please. I can quickly go through this. We have many mechanical levels and penthouses and enclosures for this project, so we have all the elevations labeled here. We'll show those future in the rendering, so we can probably keep moving forward. It's a very tight site with a lot of equipment to locate on the roof. Keep going to the next slide. So here's the Portland Street elevation. The red brick building with the teal accents is the existing building. The new addition is the limestone and copper looking to the left. We are 92'8 of occupiable space along Portland Street. Zoning height is 100 feet. We do have our mechanical screens above that. You can see we're well below the mechanical screens in existing occupiable space of the existing Onyx Hotel. We are removing the two stories of the sod of the existing building and creating a much more unified, upgraded experience on the ground floor to make this building feel as one integral piece. Next slide is the rear elevation or Friend Street. Where we do come down to Friend Street, again, you'll see the roof deck, which the roof of the roof deck enclosed area does exceed our zoning height of 100 feet by 5'4 inches. And then we have some mechanical screens above that, and you can see we're still well below the existing Onyx Hotel mechanical screens and occupiable area. The next slide shows the building from the side elevation, which is not an elevation anybody could really see because we're cutting through the mid-block. But we wanted to show this because we're trying to be very respectful of the street frontage, and where we do have to have above-height mechanical space, we're pulling that very much inward to the middle of the building to prevent any views of that mechanical screen. So that will be all, as on the right-hand side, 28 feet setback from Portland Street. On the left-hand side, we're 39 feet setback from Friend Street. Those streets are very narrow, there's no view access of these mechanical spaces at all from the street realm. And you can see how our occupiable height of our building is below the zoning height on Portland Street and just above on Friend Street, as we do have that roof deck on the rear. The next two slides just show the upgraded street experience on Portland Street, the new framed openings, the new nano-wall, the larger expansive glass looking into the lobby, which currently, right now, is not as much glass, it has our receiving dock. So we're creating a much more open experience. You can just keep going to the next slide, please. Next one. And here is a, our FAR, to explain why we're here for our FAR and zoning relief, is when we permitted this project originally on the left-hand side, this was in addition to the existing Onyx Hotel. Adding 77 rooms to the existing 112. You can see the corresponding zoning heights, square footage, and FAR information. In working with ISD, we've been asked to combine these sites, so we are combining and creating a kind of a mathematical problem, where we still maintain the 189 guest rooms, the 112 plus the 77. Site area does not change, our combined area is 90,000. But what happens is we take two approved site areas, FAR areas of 9.3 and 7.4, and do a combined FAR area for 8.37. So it's just the combining of the two sites changes the record of the existing hotel and the proposal of the addition.
All right, thank you.
Next slide, please, and this is the last one, is just showing the resiliency and compliance, where we are maintaining the existing floor height at elevation 17, as that's the existing hotel that we're adding to. But we're providing waterproofing barriers on the entire property, up to the 19 feet where we need to be. And we have our movable waterproof barriers on Friend Street and along Portland Street, which we provide that storage area in the basement that we've made provisions for. I turn it back, go with Johanna, just talk about the zoning.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to walk through the criteria for the relief that we require, or we can just go to questions.
Yeah, no, let's move to questions. So the parking lot that has been in place there to the left, facing from Portland Street to the left, that's been owned by the Onyx or by the ownership of the Onyx, and it's been used for what, for garden events and for guests? For, what has it been used for in the intervening years?
It's principally been, it's a very small parking lot, and it's principally been used for employee parking. I would note that during the Article 80 process, we did submit a full transportation analysis, which was vetted by the BPDAs and VTD, and no one found any problems with eliminating.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, that was my question, is whether you're making provisions to replace, to have alternate forms of taking care of folks that work there. I mean, obviously, it's close to public transportation, so I assume that's how most people will get there. All right, okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good, I really actually don't have any questions. Proposal, to me, makes sense. I think it's a good place for the additional building, and the height is consistent with the existing, obviously, but I think in this area, it makes a lot of sense. I really, no real questions from me on the proposal.
Okay, it is encouraging to see that the hospitality industry is making the expand again, so that's a nice.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, any questions on the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just, do you have the G-Cod, Mr. Semenelli?
Oh, that's right. Mr. Semenelli, you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
And we have them as well, Mr. Chair.
All right, then let me take, just let's do a motion on the groundwater issue and then get back to the underlying zoning issues.
Motion approved, the groundwater.
All right. Mr. Fortune?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero? Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Canato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
I have two in favor, so the motion passes. Okay, do we want to take testimony on the underlying project?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Public meeting was held on July 20th. No concerns were raised from the Butters. As you heard from the applicant's representation, the West End Civic Association issued a letter of non-opposition. We're unaware of any concerns at the time. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we do have letters of support.
Okay, any other raised hands?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Any reason why?
Um, no particular reason, thank you.
Okay.
It says, I didn't know if this was Councilland's area.
Yeah.
It is.
It is, okay.
Jay Walsh, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association at 200 Portland Street. In the West End, we'd like to go on record in support of the project, as was mentioned. The hotel does a great job in serving the hospitality industry, and these types of businesses are critical to the success of this area and our members, and we'd like to on record support. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kunish, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, good afternoon, Gudesh Shugani, owner of 234 Friend Street, director of Butters to the Onyx Hotel. I'd like to go on record to support the project, and I believe it'll be great for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Abahena? Minor, go ahead. And then Sebastian?
Thank you, my dear ambassador. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, minor of Butters representing the Carpenters Union, would like to go on record and support of this project.
You.
Hi, Sebastian Del Fonte, I'm the executive director of the Weston Museum and a member of the Weston Civic Association Zoning and Planning Committee. The museum has been operating as a civic and cultural leader in the West End for about two decades and has had the opportunity to work with the Onyx and its owners on a number of occasions, including through the Article 80 process surrounding this expansion. The Onyx has always been a good partner for the community. They filled two long empty lots that have integrated their, and have integrated their architectural designs well into the historic character of the triangle. The Weston's only remaining historic section, which the museum really appreciates. I'm confident the Onyx will be a positive influence for the neighborhood, and we fully support this project. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve or BPDAs design review?
I'll second, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Canato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more 9:30 case, it's after 12. So we'll do that and take, we'll do that case and take a break.
Well, we have to get the other one, kind of call it into the record.
Yes.
Right, okay. Calling case BOA 1344593, 230 Everett Street. This is to raise the existing building on a permit, separate permit and erect a five-unit residential, four-story dwelling and parking for six vehicles on a 4,500-square-foot lot. Violation Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. Article 53, Section 8, the MFI use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, accessory parking unit is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient sideyard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area for dwelling unit. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed height in sub-district dimensional chat has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 56, insufficient off-street parking. Article 27T-5, East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient raya setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Williams, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chair, I just need to recuse myself on this.
All right, thank you.
I believe we also have Chris Prudhomme from Zephyr Architects. I was asked to lead the elevated to a panelist, so he can answer any specific questions. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm pleased to be here on behalf of Ms. Karina Mahia, who although has been a lifelong resident of East Boston, involved in a number of real estate projects, this is, we are first ground-up construction project, hopefully. And we are pleased to talk a little bit about what she proposed on the site. So this is located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Currently, a double-sized lot for the zoning district is located in the 3F 2,000 district at 4,500 square feet. We are proposing to raise the existing single-family structure and replace that with a five-unit multifamily structure. If we could jump down to slide eight, I believe that is the BPD abstracts to show overview of lot size and just talk a little about the zoning. So as I mentioned, this is a 3F 2,000 district, but as you can see, the lot width is about 45 feet and 100 feet in depth. And because of that, this lot could be subdivided into two separate lots for two separate, two-family structures. Instead, based upon conversations with the community and a lot of feedback that we did receive over the process of the community outreach, we have come up with a project that we feel fits on the site and is compatible with the community desires for this location. So this will be a five-unit building. There are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The average unit size is about 1,500 square feet. Again, that comes from the conversations with the community about having larger-sized units that could accommodate families in this neighborhood. We do provide a total of five off-street parking spaces. We can jump down to slide 18, that is actually the site plan that we can review. One parking space would be assigned to each unit. This is intended to be for homeownership and would be individual condominiums. So this is the site plan showing the structure as it sits on the site with the five parking spaces located to the rear. The garage would be located, the right side of the building would pass through the building out to an open area in the back with the five parking spaces being shown. We do have an area located to the rear that could be used for a smaller courtyard. Each of the units will have independent outdoor space with decks as well as roof decks that are proposed and that would be accessed by a hatch. Mr. Chairman, this is also subject to G-Cod,[1721.80] Mr. Chairman, this is also subject to G-COT, so I don't know if you want to handle the G-COT separately by two.
Yes, let's do the G-COT separately. Mr. Semenelli, you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the app.
And we have them as well, Mr. Chair.
Alright, motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'm taking.
I was waiting for someone to second, they didn't second.
Second.
Alright, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
He's recused.
He's recused.
Oh, that's right, Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
I'm in favor, okay, we're taking care of that piece. Go ahead, Mr. Loeb.
Chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if we could just jump back to slide 12 and 13, and actually, the rendering that was prepared by Zephyr actually shows the relationship of how the building would fit into the surrounding context. This section of Jeffrey's Point does have a mix of uses. There are multifamilies, as well as some four-story buildings. Actually, this does back up to Maverick Street, which also has a similar type of design and feel, so this building, again, that we're showing is consistent with what we see generally in the Jeffrey's Point section of East Boston. I will point out, again, that this has gone through a very extensive community process. The neighborhood, you know, actually have a lot of input into this project, and we were able to secure the very coveted support of the Jeffrey's Point Neighborhood Association, which is not something that is very common.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Okay, so if I may, just again, as I went through the overview, I want to just roughly touch upon the zoning relief that is necessary. As I said, this is a double-sized lot, so the typical lot in this district is 2,000 square feet. We're at 4,500 square feet, so actually, just shy of enough space for five units total under the zoning code. We do meet the lot width, lot frontage, by more than 25 feet. We are requesting relief on the side yard. The closest point we come is 1.5 feet, 2.5 is the setback requirement, but there are some, you know, setbacks within the building that allow for the openings under the building code. We do have a rear yard setback condition, even though we are cited for it. Our building itself sits at 30 feet, which is the required setback under the code. We do show some rear decks, however, that do creep a little bit into the side yard setback by about two feet, so we are requesting relief for that. Our floor-to-air ratio is a 1.78, which is above the 1.0 that's permitted, however, very consistent with the FAI's of the surrounding neighborhood. We do exceed the height by seven feet, at 42 feet, but we did, again, in direct response to requests by the neighborhood through the neighborhood process, set that fourth level back and differentiate the details and the architecture so that we are sort of continuing along with the three-story massing along that side of Everett Street. With respect to the open space, we, including the decks, we do have a little under the required 1,500 square feet total, about 1,177 square feet. And then, as I mentioned, six parking spaces. Eight is the requirement under the code, however, we would be assigning one parking space per dwelling unit. With that, and as I said, we do have Chris Prudhomme, if there are any specific questions from the board, I'm answering questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the, you got the, the second and third floors can levered out over the front, the first floor. How far out do they extend?
If we can go back to the site plan, I believe if they do come over the public way, Mr. Chairman, they're within the 24 inches that is permitted under the de minimis design requirements for protrusions or extensions over the public way. I think our site plan is actually down at 18. We could go. So, yeah, no more than 24 inches into the public way, which is, you know, something that'd be required under the de minimis projection standard.
And is the fourth floor setback, is that in line with the first floor?
If, Chris, if you could.
No, it's setback further.
It's setback further.
Yeah. On the fourth floor, we're setback 10 feet from the, or almost 10 foot nine, from the furthest forward point on that right side, kind of second, third, fourth podium.
We probably can see it on the second.
Hang on, hang on, 10 foot nine on the fourth floor?
Yep.
And what is the projection from the first floor?
Projection on the first floor is... From that same spot.
Well, no, from the first floor exterior wall?
Yep, from the first floor exterior wall to the fourth floor, or to the?
No, to the second and third.
To the second and third. It's two feet. It's 1 foot 11, depending on exactly where you're measuring from, but two feet.
That's a 24, okay, that's a 24 inches that Mr. Lins was talking about.
Yep.
Alright, alright, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are good. Looks like the second and third floor are set five feet back from the front property line. That's what the dimension calls out, so it's not hanging the sidewalk. I guess, I actually don't have necessarily a problem with that. My only problem is on the side yards. You know, they're already minimal at 2 foot 6, and you're encroaching a foot on each side, and looking at the plans, it seems easily possible to actually meet those two side yards, and, you know, there's no windows on your side yard, but there are some on the adjacent buildings, so I guess I think we should consider that as we're moving forward. I don't have an issue with the rear or the actual program and height. No other questions from me.
Okay, yeah, it does seem a pretty dense use of the lot, though. Okay, any questions from the board? Is anyone here to speak either for or against the project?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's Aliveni, to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Before I give testimony, I would want to ask Mr. Lins to confirm the roof decks, because I thought that the roof decks were going to be removed from this lot.
Yes, I believe we, if we're able to go back to the site, yes, we did, we did remove the roof.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because you mentioned the roof decks, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, we did, we did remove.
Well, hang on, can I get a clarification on that? There seem like there are decks, but they're not on the top of the fourth floor. The deck's on the, on the, the third, above the third floor, correct?
Sure, if we can go to page 20, I apologize, I should have clarified. So there's no roof decks above the fourth level. There are decks for the setback of the fourth level, which would be front rear, so.
And those would be accessed by a walkout, I assume?
Yeah, correct. They would be accessed from the fourth level, not, there's no, as we're showing, yeah, the roof plan is not showing the roof decks above.
Okay, okay. Alright, does that, does that, to the Mayor's office?
Yes, that answered the question. Thank you very much. So our office hosted two butters meeting for this project. The first one in March 24th, second April 14. The butters had a lot of concerns initially regarding the number of units proposed, as well as the addition of the roof decks. The applicant met with the Jeffrey's Point Neighborhood Association in January, February, April, and May. The association ultimately supported the project. The applicants worked with the association and the butters extensively and took all the feedback that was provided, ultimately reducing the proposed numbers of units from seven to five, removing the two roof decks, as well as changing the design to better fit the character of the neighborhood. Our office received one letter in opposition and 19 letters in support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we do have one letter of opposition, I'm sorry, two letters of opposition, one letter of support.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a few raised hands here. I'll start with Daniel, and then go to Bradley. Daniel, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
We cannot hear you. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks. Daniel Croupy, I live on 9RD Street, I direct the butter. I've worked extensively with the developer on this. They've addressed all my concerns, so I'd like to throw my support behind this project. Thank you.
Bradley, can you name an address for the record, please?
Yep, Brad Blazel, I'm at 15 Everett Street. I'd like to throw in my support for this project. I think it's great for the community.
Thank you. Alexa, go ahead. Name an address, please.
I'm Alexa, I live at, on 126 Lexington Street. I just want to say I support this project as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dizan?
Dasani?
Go ahead, sorry about that. Name an address for the record, please?
Yes, Dasani Arana, I live on 432 Saratoga Street, and I also am in support for this project. I think it would be great, not only for the neighborhood, but for the continuous development in East Boston.
Thank you. No additional raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion in a little bit, hearing the BPA in my ear, which they recommended denial, but I would like to make a motion.
You know, Mr. Robinson, before we, we should listen for Mr. Hampton.
Yep.
I was trying to sneak by on this one.
No, no, no. I was referencing you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPD. We did recommend denial without prejudice. Mr. Robinson raised one of our concerns about the side yard setbacks, and also, there's a lack of real open space back there. That little patio out back just wasn't adequate for us.
Thanks, sorry, Mr. Robinson, why don't you go ahead?
No, that's fine. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve, however, not grant the side yard setbacks as requested on this proposal. I think through the BPA design review process, to complete the project, I think they can rework the plan and adhere to the side yard setbacks on both sides, and I think that's good for the budding neighbors.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero, no, Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Yeah, and I have two in favor, the motion passes.
Follow the last case that we were going back to earlier that we were not here. BOA 13442831, Rodney Road. Is anybody on from Rodney Road? Hearing none, it's now 11:30, and we just finished the 9:30 cases.
Wait, we did, we did.
We did Rodney Road.
We got to the option.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Babson, I can call, I apologize. It's been a long 9:30 case.
I'm sorry.
Case BOA 1348905, 120 to 124 Babson Street. Is Babson Street on?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Name an address for the record, please.
26 Bloomfield Street. I'm the architect of the project, the owner is also on the call.
Okay, please tell us what you're proposing.
So this is a project that, that at first, okay, I think you have it here.
Hold on, are you moving forward on the project or are you deferring?
Well, we were, we were given the option of deferring, but I wasn't exactly clear exactly when the deferment date would be.
It wouldn't be till January 2023.
So that which is a long time for us. We have been waiting for a long time to get here.
And I need to call it into the record, though. Hold on two seconds.
Oh, hang on, hang on. So you want to go forward today?
So, the reason why we.
No, 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 hang on. Yes or no? This has been a long day already for us.
I understand, I understand. But I just, I just wanted to just say briefly, is the reason why we wanted to do the deferment is because part of the community process was not fully completed, and because we were not able to get into, to agenda some of the neighborhood groups.
Well, then I would.
You have to defer.
Then I would suggest you take a deferral, because that's going to come up in the testimony, and we'll end up wasting your time and our time, and ending up with a deferral anyway if you haven't completed the community process.
I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
I'll second the motion. Eric?
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
I'm muted, Mr. Ruggiero.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I'm, I am in support. You want to give them a date?
January 10 at 11:30, 2023, of course.
Thank you.
Is there, is there an earlier date than that?
No. That is the earliest, we're already due out this month and next month.
Alright, it is now 12:33. We have unfortunately just concluded the 9:30 cases, but we need a break, so I'm going to suggest we adjourn until 12:50. Let's take a, let's take a, hold on, a 15 to 20 minute break. Let's reconvene at 12:50, 5:00.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're going to be losing one of our members here, and I'm hoping that we don't have anybody that's going to recuse themselves as well, so we could have some.
Well, we'll do the best we can.
Okay.
Alright, 12:50, re-adjourn.
Thank you.
I mean, reconvene. Thank you.